Call the meeting to order and have Mrs. Nash do a roll call, please.
Mr. Gomes?
Here.
Ms. Neary?
Here.
Ms. Boatright?
Here.
Ms. Bowlin?
Here.
Dr. Flowers?
Present.
Mr. Leary?
Yeah.
We'll now stand and have Ms. Bowlin lead us in the pledge allegiance.
Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
We'll now have a moment of silence if we could keep the following individuals who have passed away in our thoughts and prayers. Paul Fisher York, nephew of Lynn Torrey Rogers High School teacher. We'll now have a moment of silence. Thank you. Do we know, no, okay. Not coming tonight? Okay. I don't see Peyton either. Oh, I'm sorry. So we'll have Peyton, we were looking for Maggie Cohen to do the student council update, but we have Peyton Fitzgerald tonight sitting in for Maggie Cohen.
Oh, right over here, honey.
And she'll give us an update on the activities of the Rogers High School students and student council update. It's all yours, Peyton, when you're ready.
Hi, I'm Peyton Fitzgerald. I'm the secretary in the Rogers High School school committee. And so these are some updates. There's a Black History Month Assembly at 10:00 a.m. on February 14th at Rogers coming up. The seniors got their cap and gowns measured and they're pretty excited to finish up the last two quarters, so that's all in right now. There's no school on Monday the 17th and Tuesday the 18th. There's a dance performance at 8:00 a.m. on February 21st at Rogers. There's a dance for all Rogers and we're trying to include Middletown students on February 22nd. And to see Anna Murphy or Mikey Phelps for more information. It's Hawaiian themed, so and all the money will go to the juniors of either Middletown class and art class. The trap came ramblers up to St. Ray's at the class championship. And also for all other sports, senior nights will be coming up. The playoffs are coming up after that. The Rogers PTO is getting student input through the class officers and the student council officers as well, so we're staying in touch with them and I think they have a fundraiser coming up, a prom theme dance. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Peyton? All right, you're all set, Peyton, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming. Next up is resolutions and certificates of achievement. And this evening we have one. This evening we are recognizing Rogers High School Athletic Director, James Colley, who has been named Rhode Island Interscholastic Athletic Administrators Association Athletic Director of the Year. Mr. Colley began his service to Newport Public Schools as a phys ed teacher, phys ed health teacher and coach at Rogers in 2001. Mr. Colley has served as the Rogers High School Athletic Director since 2009 and is a member of the Rhode Island, the Rhode Island Association of Athletic Administrator, a lot of As in there, but he's been on the executive board and he's on the Rhode Island Interscholastic League Softball Committee. And I will add that I know Jim works his tail off for our students. It's really tremendous amount of work he does on a very limited budget and we can appreciate that. He makes sure the kids get all that they deserve and he works very hard for them. So I'm really honored this evening to be able to present Jim this, so if you want to step up to the podium, I'll pass it off to you.
We have pictures.
So I suppose I should say a few words, so thank you for recognizing this tonight. Thanks to row three over there, my family and extended family. The row three there. I'm able to do, anybody that gets things like this always require support from somewhere. And it started with my parents right there from day one and my wife, my children. My son's at hockey practice, because who schedules hockey practice now? Me. And my father-in-law, my mother-in-law are not able to be here, but they're always here to support and have the back and it's a huge asset. And things like this don't get accomplished without that. As far as Rogers, it's nice recognition, I was able to see that they've been doing this, the RII AAA, RII AAA, whatever, it is a lot of As. Maybe I'll work at that the next meeting. They've been giving out this award for 47 years and three people from Rogers have gotten it before, or three, including myself, and other two names are John Topa and Rick Holt. So those are men that are highly respected in this community and well-known, so that is over my head when I think of it that way, so thank you again.
Very well deserved, because a lot of the credit that our athletes get in the success of our athletes are definitely to Mr. Colley's dedication, so we appreciate it, thank you.
I just wanted to mention too that he had a huge impact on my boys when they attended Rogers. They looked up to him and, you know, he would have lunch with them, spent time with them, and you have been a huge influence on their lives and really appreciate that. And I know that they're just representative of all the other students at Rogers. And we appreciate, you know, everything you do and the personal interest you take in all of our students.
Yes.
So since arriving here in Newport, one of the things I always realized and I understand, an athletic director is key to a successful high school. And I want to thank Jim, especially because when we wanted to add more teams or when we wanted to go with more types of sports, he was always there, even maybe in the beginning he'd go, "Really?" But the kids have been benefiting so much and it is, and I know you're very modest, but I've said this to you before, you do a lot for our school and I'm glad to see you get this recognition. And I know it's a team effort, but it takes a true leader to make it happen, so thank you. Thank you to his wife especially.
Next item, we'll move into public comment. Mrs. Nash, is there anybody signed up for public comment this evening? Please step up and identify yourself for those that are watching.
Hi, I'm Kendra Munter. I am the, almost said Pell, Thompson Middle School PTO president. I just wanted to announce that the Thompson Middle School is starting their fundraiser tomorrow. The students will be selling raffle calendars, so it's 31 days of prizes. And since we live in an amazing community, all the prizes were donated, so it is 100% profit instead of giving 60% to some corporation for cookies or candles. So if you know a Thompson student and would love to buy a calendar, they would love to sell you one. If you do not know a Thompson student, send the PTO an email at tmspto@npsri.net and we can connect you to a Thompson student. And I have some calendars, if anyone wants to look at them, I can just leave them over there on the table. The students will be selling from tomorrow until March 2nd and then the drawing runs from March 9th through April 8th and it's 31 days of prizes. Minimum you can win is $50, the maximum is we've had weekends at a hotel and $600 prizes, so it's a really, really good fundraiser and we're really excited to kick it off. And every, the student who sells the winning ticket also wins a prize for that day. And then we're doing a grand prize for all the students to try to win a Chromebook to help incentivize them to sell tickets so that we can collect lots of money and do lots of things for Thompson, so yes.
How much?
One for 10, three for 25, or a packet of 10 for 75.
I have my check.
Thank you. Is that it, Mrs. Nash?
That is it.
Okay, so that moves us into our action items. First action item is 5.1, request for approval to submit Ride Stage 2 application. I don't know if Mrs. Bowlin or Mrs. Boatright, probably Mrs. Bowlin tonight will give us a little information and...
So first of all, I just want to let you know that my partner here in crime, the co-chair, has no voice tonight, so you're not going to be hearing too much from her, which is kind of odd to say the least. So, because she's never short of words, but they're always powerful. So tonight, we have the Stage 2 submission, which is an incredibly huge document that all of you have been given time to read and peruse. And it's really important tonight that we get this Stage 2 submission, you know, approved by our school committee so that tomorrow night it'll go in front of the city council. And we're hoping that we have, you know, 100% approval tomorrow night, that everybody's going to be behind us. This is really an important, you know, for our community that we're going to have a brand-new high school and also that we are going to be taking Pell here and getting it resized, right-sized. And so that is, you know, to us something really important. We also want, at this point, you know, we're looking at it as one bond from the school committee's side because we're one Newport and we don't want to leave the high school students behind and we don't want to leave the young, our younger students behind, so very excited about this tonight. And I don't know if you wanted to say anything about it tonight, so that was all I was going to say.
Absolutely, help yourself.
This is our, this is Joe and he is our...
Owner's project manager.
Owner's project manager.
Hi, good evening. I'm Joe Disanti, project executive with Downs Construction, the owner's project manager for the city of Newport. So one of the things I wanted to update everybody on is we did have another follow-up meeting with Ride last week. Again, very productive, very collaborative. A couple of things that came out of that meeting that, one of note that I'd like to talk about is the reimbursement if any of the capital improvement projects are done down the road. If the city of Newport does not go forward with the construction of the new Rogers High School and anything fails at the school or the city decides to repair or replace anything or build something new, for example, if a boiler was a problem that had to be replaced, Ride has already told us that they cannot support the cost for that. The city of Newport could go ahead and do whatever they want to do. They would support and help reimburse for the cost for repairing it, but they said because of the age of the school, because of the FCI rating, which is rated as the worst high school building structure in Rhode Island, and the condition of the building, they cannot support any new work that would happen there. So the only thing that they would reimburse for is repairing the boiler at this point. So it was something that was a very detailed discussion that we had and we asked the question when we were there as well. So we have a, I'm a little at loss here to see what we have there. A couple of things that we had as far as...
Joe, you can tag that.
Oh, that's right.
Mike, if you want, you know, just kind of walk with it and...
All right, that's a little better. So the reason why we're here and the need for the Stage 2. Rogers High School, the facilities need report, which was done by Jacobs in 2017, at that time identified Rogers High School, the structure as one of the worst high school facility buildings in the state of Rhode Island, just because of the age and deterioration of the building. You know, I've said it in the past and I'll continue to say it, the city of Newport has done an excellent job trying to keep that building up, but just because of the nature of the building, the sprawling campus, the type of structure, the construction that was used, a lot of concrete, you could see it, it's failing. It's met its lifetime. It's done a great job for the city of Newport to date. Five-year maintenance only needs that were identified by the Jacobs report in 2017 were $51.5 million. We have done an assessment, we've also reviewed an assessment that was done by Studio Jade that puts that number closer to 70 million at this point. And like I said, if something failed at the school today, we had a very specific discussion with Ride about if a boiler failed, what would happen? And they said, "Well, you got to repair it. We're not going to support you replacing it at this point." Immediate life safety that was identified is $4.00 million. So that means sprinkler, alarm systems, those kind of things, fire alarms, those are something that needs to be upgraded immediately. And again, that today, if it was done, would be at least $4.5 million. Inadequate cath, library and media center, which was something the Jacobs report specifically identified as those bigger areas that just don't meet the needs of a modern school right now. Safety and security deficiencies, which were highlighted as well in the report and as well has been highlighted by Downs with our review of it. We've identified 77 exterior doors, very difficult obviously to secure that. Extensive corridors and glass, sprawling campus, it's an inefficient design. You have to leave the building to go into another part of the building sometimes. You know, it's all those kind of things and it just doesn't meet the educational needs of the city of Newport. Pellet elementary school overcrowding, as soon as the school was open, you know, the projections were, came in greater, which is good. You know, sometimes they say, you know, if you build them, they will come and that certainly happened here with Pell. I think that's a good indication. Pre-K, which was specifically built and for this school, has never been able to come back into the school and now they will. You know, there's a lot of good that will come out of having everybody into one roof, which is what the guidelines call for now. Lack of support space, I give Tracy a lot of credit for the principal and the support staff here. They've gone and took every nook and cranny that they could for storage and for putting individuals in. They've done their best, but they're busting at the seams right now. Educational performance is currently impeded. You know, again, there's just not enough room to have the right-sized spaces right now. Safety and security deficiencies, bus drop-off, I've talked about this a number of times in other meetings as well. It's unsafe, it's chaotic, they've done a great job trying to keep it together. The Newport Police Department and Fire Department have been out here as well and they have their concerns. So one of the things that we're going to address within that Stage 2 application is revising that bus drop-off, making a secure, separating the two, which is ideal. The parrot drop-off from the bus drop-off, making sure that we have two separate distinct areas and maybe possibly three. And then the other thing is deficient site conditions. So some of the positives right now of getting the Stage 2 in is the Ride reimbursement of 35%, which is guaranteed, the Ride bonus incentives of 17.5%, which again are right now real and we've been, have been identified, but they also sunset. There's a certain date where we lose that incentive and they're not guaranteed right now either. Historically low interest is another one. The other thing that I just want to touch on briefly as well is that, you know, we've heard talk of regionalization. You know, right now there isn't a willing partner to do that. The other issue that comes up as well is if there is a regional high school for 1,500 students, the cost, if you just use the same square footage guidelines that you use for the Rogers, new Rogers High School, you would need a building, it's probably about $190 million. And then you still have to identify a site for that to be on that's going to work for everybody. And you would lose some control. There is some loss of control between the two districts. One of the things that we've identified is that in some of the schools that have regionalization, there has been no tax decrease, so there wasn't really any benefit as far as the tax benefit that some people tell about the regionalization. And there's also, will be, the loss of temporary state funding and Ride bonus incentives that's coming in the near future. One of the other questions we asked when we were Ride is about, with Ride, about the regionalization, is they said that there, even though the reimbursement rate would go up slightly if Newport found a partner, what they said unless you regionalized all of the schools, so K through 12, the bonuses would not, I mean, the actual reimbursement would not go up as much as everybody would expect. So it might be another 5%, but it certainly wouldn't be anywhere in the 60 or 70% unless you did the entire K through 12 program. So with that, I'm going to have Philip Conti from Studio Jade talk a little bit about the spreadsheet that they've prepared.
Thank you, Joe. My name is Philip Conti, I'm an architect with Studio Jade and I've had the pleasure of working with this community for almost two years now, getting us from the very beginning to this phase you are in now. Reminding everybody that we had submitted a Stage 1 to the school building authority, which they accepted and approved and invited you to submit the Stage 2. The Stage 1 is the identification of the needs. I don't think there's any question that there are needs at Pell and at Rogers. Stage 2 is our solution to those needs, which is an eight-classroom addition here at Pell and a new Rogers High School at the site of Rogers. We've identified $9.5 million at Pell and about $105 million at Rogers High School. We've had meetings with the school building authority, they have come and toured the building. We have gone over what our proposed solution is and they're in agreement. Stage 2, submission of the application allows them to review and consider it for reimbursement. And then with that approval, that allows you as a community to then take it to the voters for approval and move forward. So the reason why this one particular chart is important, because it does identify an opportunity that I don't want to say is once in a lifetime, but is certainly opportunistic right now. Newport had the highest percentage of approval when you voted for the $250 million statewide bond referendum for school construction. You should be pursuing those incentives and bringing them back to your community. Your base rate is 35%. With the incentives, you have the potential for an additional 17.5%. And through the type of projects that we're looking to do, we believe you have a high probability of maximizing your reimbursement. However, we can only say that we're going for 35% now. Based on our analysis, based on our review with Ride, is that at the end of all construction, that you will likely be afforded a greater opportunity on reimbursement, which then impacts obviously the long-term funding. So I have the opportunity of working with a number of districts. You have a solid plan, you have a need, now's the time to move it forward and submit for approval and then take the appropriate steps afterward.
Thank you. The motion would be in order to approve the request for the approval of the Stage 2 application.
So moved.
Motion made by Mrs. Bowlin, seconded by Ms. Boatright. Any discussion or questions for either one? Mr. Leary?
Mr. Chairman, I will not be supporting this. To me, right now, you're slamming the door in the face of the Middletown citizens. They have a group of people, as you're all well aware of, with about 1,200 signatures now wanting to get on the ballot for November to show that visualization can be done. And I think the time is getting closer. I know four years ago, six years ago, whatever election was, Newport overwhelmingly approved this thing, or not overwhelmingly, by five, 10 percentage points. Middletown didn't, but it was by five or less percentage points and don't quote me in those numbers, but they're pretty close. And I just think that we should not be doing that to these people at this point. And I think they really want to combine, and I think Parsons will come along also.
Mrs. Neary?
I have just a question, a clarification, because I think I heard it correctly. So if something happens to, at Rogers right now, let's say we decide not to go with this, and if something happens at Rogers, the, like you said, the boiler breaks or any kind of major work, we will only have money to repair, not to replace?
That's correct. Ride will only support reimbursing for any repair, they will not provide any reimbursement for replacement of anything.
So the roof goes, we have to find money and repair it, can't replace it?
Correct.
I mean, not through Ride?
Correct. Yeah, the city of Newport could choose to do whatever they want, but to pursue reimbursement through Ride, we've been specifically told they will not support a major or even minor. If a boiler goes, they would rather, they want to see it repaired because they know the life expectancy of it is limited and they do not want to spend any more money or support spending any more money.
So fundamentally for us, the decision is, we know, certainly for Rogers, we know what our building looks like, its condition, we know that we are in need of repairs, but if we need to do any of these repairs, those are really on us, but if we replace, then we have Ride behind us in terms of reimbursement?
Correct.
Okay, I was just clarifying.
Mrs. Bowlin?
Yeah, to Mr. Leary's point, the, this thing that was submitted to the city of Middletown included 1,200 signatures of people who asked the city council to reopen the talks. But now they've gone back and now they're trying to get something on the ballot. And what they're trying to get on the ballot is just that we go into discussion once again with the city of Newport to talk about this. And talk, at this point, we can't miss the boat here, you know, the trains leaving the station and we have got to take care of our students in this town and look out for our interests financially with the city because these incentives are going to go away. We are at least five years out right now with the city, if in fact something were to happen with Middletown. And they also had it clarified that it's only going to be, at this point, we're talking about the high school, you know, and they're talking about unification, not regionalization, by the way, they have, putting the word unification. So there are no signatures turned in at this point to, to my knowledge, that have been verified yet with the city on this bond referendum. So I think that we have to, you know, I for one am not going to, you know, turn my back on the teachers, the community. We're going to do what we can to get this passed and take care of our own community.
Mrs. Dr. Flowers?
Just very simply, the deadline is February 17th.
Correct.
Today is February 11th.
Correct.
I mean, it's just, it seems it's, couldn't be any simpler. And we owe it to the community, we owe it to the students, the teachers, everyone, to get this going, so we can start hopefully working on the next stage.
Mr. Chairman, could I just respond to Ms. Bowlin?
Sure.
Okay, so I just want to be clear that the submission of the Stage 2 application does not, does not preclude you from following up, looking at unification or regionalization. It does not. All the Stage 2 does is get you in the queue, get you the approval, set into motion the reimbursement and any of the bonuses incentives and start working as you've started with the Stage 2 application. It's just a continuation. If the city of Newport decided down the road to change their mind afterwards, they certainly can, or they could still continue to pursue discussions with regionalization, unification.
But then if I understand correctly, then we're off the queue for the reimbursement?
Correct. You would have to submit a new Stage 1 for the regionalization, unification, but if you submit the Stage 2 now, you at least have it in the queue and it's through the, going through the process.
Well, and the state doesn't have infinite amounts of money. The bond was for a specific amount of money and the longer we wait, the less money there is.
There is a potential risk, yes, that you, for the bonuses incentive to go away as well.
Mrs. Leary, did you have any?
Thank you, yeah, two questions. Do you know how, of the $250 million, how much money has already been accounted for for other districts?
So there's a little confusion with the $250 million. I think about $150 million of that is. That is not the total bonding for all of the schools. That is upfront money, seed money is what I refer to it as. That does not include the total bonding for all of the schools and any of this, throughout the state of Rhode Island. It's a bond that was approved by the voters to start this process and they'll have to increase, continue to do bonding as they go through this program.
So there's possibly next cycle come up, this November, two years now, they add another 250 into it. So where's the state going to get the money if it's already got the 250 and that's all they allocated and they get 400 million in responses?
They're going to have to start picking and choosing or they're going to have to increase the bonding.
So how much is already picking and choosing out of the 250 million?
My understanding, they've allocated a little less than 150 million right now.
So there's only 100 million left?
To my understanding, yes.
Okay. So of all the, how many other people are applying right now?
Go ahead.
I just want to clarify something here. That the 250 million statewide bond is not the school reimbursement, school funding, housing aid money. You are reimbursed every year for 20 years on your projects. As Joe mentioned, that 250 million is startup money. It is that pay-go money. It is a little bit of money that they can give out to districts so they could start these projects. It's probably that money that is used to help add to these percentage points. But do not confuse that 250 million dollars in any way whatsoever with housing aid reimbursement that is spread out over 20 years. There's absolutely no relationship between those two. And I can also tell you this, last night in a public meeting with the town council at Portsmouth, they approved their submission of their Stage Two. Their application is for 65 million in Portsmouth. So that submission will be made this week. They have all of their approvals, much like we will be at city council tomorrow night.
So I thought it was 30 years, now 20?
Twenty, 30 years, whatever.
It's a big difference in percentage of money when you do that.
It's the housing aid reimbursement though. It's the housing aid reimbursement. It has nothing to do with the 250 million dollars.
Okay. Make that clear tomorrow night, because I want to look some facts to back that up, as well as the repair thing. Can you get the state to show us in writing where they say, because three years ago, we did the roofs at Rogers by 50% because that's all the money that was allocated and those roofs are working fine. And that money was given 35% of the reimbursement from the state. So now we have to repair a couple more roofs next year, the year after. I'd like to see in writing where they say they're not going to give us that 35%.
Sure. In our meeting with RIDE last week, we have identified over 20 million dollars worth of work to hold as a line item for the existing Rogers High School. And they said absolutely not. We will not approve a 20 million dollar line item for Rogers. Their reaction was a couple million. So the application process will have money allocated for the existing Rogers High School. We could certainly leave 20 million dollars in, but the approval that you will get back will be for just a few million dollars. As Joe mentioned, they do not want to invest large amounts of money in a school that is well documented to have gone beyond its useful life and needs to be corrected.
I'm sure it shouldn't be in a bond. I agree with you, but I think I'd be interested to know whether we did a separate thing, fix some roofs up where they'd pay the 35% or not. That's what I need to know. I'll call tomorrow morning. I'll call.
Mrs. Leary?
I'm going to speechify. I apologize. All of these conversations, all of our conversations have to do with money and that makes sense because that's what makes the world go. However, however, fundamentally, do our children not deserve to have a building that is safe, that is warm, that is a place where they can be educated? Like fundamentally, that's the question. We can go back and forth on the money, but where we put our money is a choice and it is a statement of our values. And what is our value? Do we value the education of our children at Rogers and at Pell enough that we will put our money where our mouth is? So I'm sorry, I'm speechifying, but we keep talking about dollars, but do our children not deserve buildings that are warm, that are safe and that are ready for the 21st century, first, 21st and 22nd century?
Trust me, we're, our buildings are not warm and safe.
Mr. Leary?
And I think that's the question that all Newport voters need to ask themselves. If the answer is no, the answer is no. But the voters need to ask themselves the question, what do our children deserve? And the children of Newport, what do the children of Newport deserve? That's our question.
Please, people who know that our buildings are safe and they are warm, so your children are not going in cold buildings and they're not safe.
Okay. So tonight's about options. We have several options. We have an option before us is the Stage Two application. After 24 some odd months plus of many, many meetings, exploration of other options such as regionalization. Unfortunately, that option isn't before us tonight, nor does it appear to be a viable option at this time. That's been explored. We've been to Middletown, we've been to Portsmouth. Told by both of them, we're not interested in regionalization, unification, or whatever word you want to call it. But if you want to send your children to our schools, we'll welcome that. So we said okay. Later tonight, you'll hear about the RFP that we put out for that to tuition our children to Middletown and Portsmouth. And we received one response from Middletown. It could have been from anybody in the state, but we received one response from Middletown and that response was, we can accommodate up to 400 of your students at this time. I'm not sure there's, you know, how we would make the option of which 400 students that would be or wouldn't be. So right now, the options, regionalization, while I think it's a valid discussion to have going forward, it's not an option for our children at this time or our families of Newport. So the regionalization, as far as I'm concerned, unification, any word you want to call it, is not an option that's before us. The option that's before us is to approve the long discussed, well-studied, two projects. The addition to Pell School, which we, I don't think anybody would dispute, we clearly need, and the building of a new high school. The high school, it's, you put 75 million dollars into a 55-year-old school, you put 100 million dollars and you build a new school. That's, I don't think anybody needs any help with that option. So with that said, the motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries five to one. Next item is 5.2, request for approval of revised FY '20 budget. Is there a motion to approve the revised budget as presented?
So moved. Second.
Motion made by Ms. Boland, seconded by Dr. Flowers. Is there any discussion or questions on the revised budget as presented? If nobody has any questions, I have one for Mr. Gonzalez. I noticed, I think it might have been just a switch in the paperwork or possibly a typo, but I noticed that the expenditure side of the budget has remained at the 42,019,554 as approved, but the revenue seems to not balance to that. So I'm not sure if it's just was a oversight or moving in the numbers or, so just that one question would be the only one I have.
Based on my financial, sorry. Based on my financial review last month, I did project an increase, a slight increase in expected expenditures. There was a small note that did not get uploaded. It was in the revenue, merge revenue tab, and I'd just like to read the statements I made. And it has to do with the revisions I made to the revenue. Okay? So January 30th, I completed the 2020 school year Impact Eight submission. And based on the very minor changes I noted between the '19 submission and the '20 submission, I believe that we could increase our estimated cost in the Impact Eight for 2020. I included that, increased the revenues anticipated for Impact Eight. Also, right underneath that statement, I have what I expect to end the year in, which is 42,072,000 as of today. And with the new projected revenues, we are at 42,890,000. So currently, we're sitting balanced with a small surplus at 17,200. So we're not, I'm not projecting a deficit today. The 42,072,000 is in the total of the total projected number. On the revenue tab is where I have the budgeted expected, and that's what the revenue I expect to receive this year. And it's stated at 42,890,000.
So, I just wondered, I mean, I just didn't know whether it would be that it would balance to the expenditures and then the remaining revenues would show up in that column perhaps so that the remaining revenues would go?
I think I understand your question. It's why don't the budgeted numbers on the expenditure tab agree to the projected revenue?
Correct.
I don't believe I have the authority to make those changes without recommendation from you for budgeted, for budgeted numbers. For revenue, I made the change.
No, I don't believe that the budgeted number should change, is my point. We approved a budget of 42,019,554. The revenue expected should always be 42,019,554. If there's any expected overage in the expected budgeted revenue, then it should be in the remaining revenues would reflect that overage so that at the end of the year, if we do remain with a roughly 60,000 overage in the expenditures, the budget would be balanced and the remaining revenue would have a 60,000 plus in that column at the end of the year.
I'm going to have to revise and I'll make it better next month. I was unclear on that and I wanted to balance my projected revenue to projected expenditure.
Just that one change?
You're going to really have to lean in tonight, Louisa.
Just that one change would work. If you just made the change to the revenue, and I'm going to suggest you do it in rental income because that next year will not be at the same level, and you just reduce it to 69,000.
Okay. No problem. Thank you.
I'm sure, I'm sure we'll discuss it more at the financial meeting soon.
Based upon those revisions, does the committee accept?
Well, I'm going to ask, is there any other questions?
Sorry.
I can handle the vote, thanks. Any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next item up is 5.3, request for approval of the revised 2019-2020 school calendar. Is there a motion to approve as presented this evening?
So moved.
Motion made by Mrs. Boland, seconded by Dr. Flowers. This is a correction through collaboration with the Teachers Association of Newport. We have added the two days, the two full days back in March for the student, those are the days when they have parent-teacher conferences and the students will come to school a half day, be dismissed and have the parent-teacher conferences in the afternoon. So the calendar had to reflect those changes and that's a revision to the calendar. Is there a motion to, a motion for made? Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by?
Wait, wait.
No, no, that's fine. No.
They have two full days now. Two full days at school.
I didn't see the parent-teacher conferences. Sorry. Can you point to where the parent-teacher conferences are? I see them in December.
Right. And then going forward, the children will have full days and as always, if parents wish to see the teachers, they can contact the teachers.
Right. So those are not scheduled parent-teacher conference days?
Correct. In March.
So the parents will have to contact the teachers?
Correct. And we'll be sending out, we already drafted out, we're sending something out tomorrow if you approve.
Okay.
Okay. Understood. Any other questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries five to, six to one, or five to one, I'm sorry, five to one. Next item on the, is 5.4, request for approval of resolution expressing support for the designation of the week of February 24th through the 28th as Public Schools Week. And I will, is there a motion to approve the resolution as presented? Mrs. Boland, seconded by Mrs. Bogrue. I will read the resolution quickly into the record. Whereas public education is a foundation of a 21st century democracy and whereas the nation's public schools are where students come to be educated as citizens of the United States and whereas each public school prepares the nation's young people to contribute to the society, economy, and citizenry of the country. And whereas 90% of American children attend public schools and whereas local, state, and federal lawmakers should prioritize support for strengthening the nation's public schools and empower local education leaders to implement, manage, and lead school districts in partnership with educators, parents, and other local education stakeholders and learning communities. And whereas local, state, and federal lawmakers should support such necessities as counseling, extracurricular activities, and mental health supports that are critical to help students engage in learning. And whereas inclusive and safe, high-quality public schools are where children learn to think critically, problem solve, and build relationships. And whereas public schools should provide an environment where all students can succeed beginning in their earliest years regardless of who they are or where they live. And whereas effort should be supported to advance equity and excellence in public education and to implement continuous improvement and advice-based, and I'm sorry, evidence-based practice. And whereas every child has the right to an education that helps them reach their full potential and to attend schools that offer a high-quality educational experience. And whereas stable, equitable, predictable, and adequate funding for great public schools for every student in America is necessary to ensure that students have inviting classrooms and school libraries with up-to-date resources as well as prepared and supported educators. And whereas educators include teachers, paraprofessionals, principals who provide a well-rounded and complete curriculum and create joy in learning. And whereas the nation's school buildings should have class sizes small enough to allow students to receive one-on-one attention and to access support services such as health, healthcare, nutrition, and after-school programs when needed. And whereas students, teachers, professionals, students, teachers, and professionals make the nation's public schools vital components of the community. And whereas parents and communities are working hard to improve educational outcomes for children across the country. And whereas the week of February 24th through 28th, 2020, would be an appropriate period to designate as Public Schools Weeks, Public Schools Week. Now therefore be it resolved that the Newport School Committee supports the designation of Public Schools Week. So you've heard the motion, you've heard the resolution, and there's a motion, any discussion or questions on the resolution? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six to one.
Thank you.
5.5 is request to approve the owner's program management contract extension. Is there a motion to approve the contract extension as presented this evening?
So moved.
Mrs. Boland, seconded by Dr. Flowers. This is a extension of the contract with Downs Construction for the services of Mr. DeSanti through June 1st to assist in the application in question period prior to RIDE's approval of the Stage Two application in May. And that's the document that you have before you tonight. Is there any questions or discussion on the motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Leary?
For the benefit of the public, could you tell them what the initial cost of the project is? I'm sorry, initial cost of Downs and what's the additional cost now?
So the initial cost was 8,700 and that was for a contract that ran through, I believe, I don't have it in front of me, but through February 17th, which was initially to get through Stage Two. It became apparent that we would need it. They have agreed to extend their contract to work at additional hours up to, at the price that is the advertised price in the purchase master price agreement with the state. And that is the proposal.
So divisional cost is 8,700?
Yes.
That is correct.
Okay. And what's the? Okay, and what's the additional cost gonna be? We don't know?
It varies depending upon, or the companies.
They would be working on a per diem basis to work on the project going forward.
Who's controlling that?
Who's controlling?
The amount of hours they put in?
The, the school building, co-chairs.
Do we know, to Mr. Larry's question, do we know where we are at? Maybe Mr. Gonzalez could help us. Do we know where we're at in relation to the eighty-seven hundred dollar not to exceed to date, for instance?
No, we don't have an invoice at this time.
So you're making an open-ended proposal here?
We could add not to exceed.
That would be a good idea, Mrs. Bowlen.
Let's, let's put, how about we put not to exceed ten thousand unless we come back and check?
Ten thousand total, okay.
Yes.
So would you like to amend, would you, we can withdraw the motion to approve, and we can make the motion to approve the owner's contract extension with a not to exceed ten thousand dollar cap?
Okay.
Is there a mo, a, a motion on that?
I made the motion, so I'll, I'll.
Mrs. Bowlen, seconded by Mrs. Boeckert. So there's a motion to approve the extension with a ten thousand dollar cap on the work, and any other questions or discussion?
Uh, yes.
Mrs. Ida, Mrs. Neary.
Mrs. Ida, um, you mentioned, Mrs. Bowlen, you mentioned that this is, or Mr. Gomes, you mentioned that this is through June one, but it doesn't say anywhere on the contract, June one?
At the tail end?
At the end, it does.
And it says, um, I've read that somewhere, I know I read it in the?
It's right under the signature lines.
But it doesn't have the June first.
No, it does not.
Somewhere in there, there's a June first. We could add that if you would like to the motion.
I would like to see that, yes.
So we will, once again, withdraw the motion, and we would ask that the motion be, the motion be made to approve the extended contract with Downs Construction with a not to exceed a ten thousand dollar amount, and all work would be executed prior to June first, two thousand twenty, or twenty twenty.
Twenty twenty. So moved.
Motion, again, made by Mrs. Bowlen, seconded by Ms. Boeckert. Any other discussion or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Mr. Larry. Next item on the agenda is five point six, request for approval of policy fifty-three hundred, district wellness policy on the second reading. Is there a motion to approve the policy as presented this evening? Mrs. Bowlen, seconded by Doc, Mrs. Neary. This is a policy reading on the second. Any discussion or questions on the policy?
Mr. Chairman, Mrs. Flowers could basically give us a Cliff Notes version of what the changes are for the benefit of the public?
Certainly, um, at the?
So, okay.
Yeah, okay. There was just one paragraph addition, this had been a request of a parent, a person who's active in the community, and in discussion we said this is important, and it's just two sentences. Newport Public Schools recognizes that all children and adults need full access to bathroom facilities, and facilities will be made available to all parties at all times. Concerns about excessive use of bathroom facilities or changes in behavior will be addressed to a school nurse and/or administrator.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussion? Seeing none?
I'm just gonna say, 'cause I see some confused faces, um, we had heard that there were some students who refused access to the bathroom, and we did not want that to happen, and hence the change in the wellness policy, to make sure that it's in policy.
So just?
And adults are included also because everyone should be allowed to, one has to.
So, yeah, I was just gonna clarify that the policy was read previously. It is, anybody can go on boarddocs.com and get the agenda, see the policy, see how it's written, see the changes that were made, so that they are all available on Board Docs for those that are watching and may not understand the policy or the changes. They are all available.
Contact me.
So, any other discussion or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six zero. Next request, I'm going to, as I did previously, five point seven, five point eight, five point nine, and five point ten, we will ask for a motion to approve those as presented. These are all policies that were put into place as part of the stage two application on the first reading last month, and then before us to be included in the stage two application. So we approved them as a group last month on the first reading, and this month on the second reading. So is there a motion to?
So moved.
Mrs. Bowlen, second, Doctor Flowers, any question or discussion on the policies?
Chairman, again, if Mrs. Flowers chooses to do it, I would choose a Cliff Notes version of what each one is, 'cause the public says to you, what the hell are you guys voting on? I don't even know where you're voting.
So as I just explained to the public, they can see them on Board Docs. They were there last month on the first reading, they'll be there after the second reading, so, um, they're lengthy policies, if Doctor Flowers would like to read them all, like?
No, not the whole policy.
Excuse me?
Not the whole policy, I'm just gonna give a brief?
Okay, all right, policy twenty-four forty-five is threat assessment, and this comes under risk management. This is a policy that you've been directed to include, and this is important for this, one of the things that we, one of the features of our plans for the schools is always a safe environment for our youngsters. The next one, policy seventy-four ten is tools for schools. That is, I'm just clicking onto this right over here, this is dealing with the environment within the schools, how we maintain the proper environment for the health of all our children and everyone else who's in there. These factors have to be taken into consideration when we're planning new facilities. The next is the Energy Star compliance, again, that's concerning energy-efficient appliances and equipment. All of this has to be kept in mind with, again, new facilities. And the last one is twenty-four ninety, the motor vehicles idling policy, which had been put in several years ago, and this is really updated now for all kinds of, not just school buses, but all sorts of vehicles, on how long they may idle, and they should not be idling unnecessarily, because it, it follows up the environment. So these are all safety issues, and the little details are certainly, anyone wants to see them, we can show you. But they, everything is defined exactly, so there are no, um, questions about what the intent of the policies are. There's nothing hidden, it's just right here. Okay?
Thank you. Any other questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six zero. Next item on the agenda is discussion items. First one under discussion is six point one. Principal Westman will give us an update on the pre-K move to Pell, the going-ons, activities in preparation for the pre-K move back to Pell School, which we will do on a monthly basis as we continue with this, move back to Pell. Principal Westman?
All right, so what we've done so far is we sat down with our admin team and the custo, our head, Vinnie Butler, the plan engineer here, and we looked at all our staffing to ensure that we had a place for everybody, 'cause that's really important, you know, that everybody, and we've mapped it all out, so we have a map. We've also mapped out all the moves that will need to take place. So then, as you do all that kind of stuff and you start the planning process, other things come up like expenses, which I did say that I couldn't think of everything when we first talked about this. So far, we've accounted for all the ELL teachers in, even in, we had add ELL or not, all our resource teachers, and anybody that we were asking for staffing, if the staffing doesn't go through, it's just one more space that we have here, that's, we did, wasn't taken. We've also notified everybody that is moving in the building. We were able to find a place for NFCOZ program, so there, we've notified them that they'll be relocated. Right now, I reached out to the city manager and Tom Harrop. We have a meeting to discuss parking tomorrow, some parking ideas, which we have, I'm not sure, you know, how they'll, how it will all work out, but we are meeting tomorrow at two thirty to discuss it. I also invited Scott Wheeler, because he's a big part of, like, the trees in that area, so he's going to come too. Um, let's see. Oh, so one of the unexpected costs that came about is we asked for more storage, but we weren't planning on using the storage for this, and moving all the people around, we will have to pack up four classrooms worth of furniture that we have to store until, at such time we, if we add on to the building. I was able to reach out to the storage facility, the one to buy Walmart, and the lady is willing to give us a deal if we extend over a period of time, I think it was somewhere around the fifteen hundred a year or something, but then it would be in a safe place.
It's a really good deal.
Yeah, she offered to give us twenty percent off, so, and I don't know how it'll work, that was, you know, a month, a month ago, but that's around there. But anyway, that might be an option. And if, maybe if we, like, offer them a longer stay, they might give us a better deal. That's just an idea I came up with, if you have other ideas, that's just one I'm trying to, trying to problem solve. Um, we're researching, we're in the process of researching moving boxes. The biggest move is going to be from the pre-K to Pell, clearly, within the building. We'll need boxes here and there, but that will be, it will, we will definitely need people to move, but it won't be as big of a deal. Right now, out of my current budget, I was able to buy seventy-five boxes, just twenty-five each for each teacher, they're going to need more than that, but I just wanna get the process started, and as they're completing units, they can pack up, that kind of thing. So I'm trying to work that out with Ronnie, to try to see how we're going to do that. Ronnie had a good idea about the sheds, you could explain that one better, 'cause about, do you wanna tell them? Yeah, yeah, so he has an idea about how to not have to have the sheds on site, but to build actually a structure onto our structure. So he came up with an idea for that. So that's where I'm at right now, that's all I, that's what I've been doing.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Larry.
I have numerous questions, but I'm gonna ask you to address a couple on your own.
Certainly.
What I'm concerned about is the storage unit, it's fourteen, fifteen hundred times four, am I correct?
No, it was my understanding, and I don't know how big we'll need. It was one storage unit, she was willing to take twenty percent off the price, it came up to about fourteen eighty-eight for the smaller.
So that's one unit, that's all we have to rent is one unit?
One unit, yes.
What's the, what's the size of that unit?
I don't, I actually do not have that information in front, but I'd be glad to look for it for you.
All right, are they climate-controlled?
Yes.
Yeah.
I, I?
It's a garage?
Huh?
You're talking about the one right next to Walmart?
The only thing, right, so I can answer that question, I, I thought it was my, I'm under the impression that they are, but if they are not, the things that we'll be storing in there would be desks, chairs, not like books or anything like that, that could be, because it would be the same if we put like one of those pods out here and put the sheds in there, it'd be kind of the same thing. It does have electricity in it, I do know that.
So I will check with some other companies.
That'd be great.
I'm concerned, obviously, we, we lost our music thing, I know it was put at Triplet School, but we lost all our music equipment, because, you know, it wasn't climatic control, and there was black mold in the building, and these garages right next door to Walmart, are you, they're on the outside, you roll up the garage door and you're right inside, outside, so if water gets in or something like that, it could be lost, and I, I think other places might wanna do it. I'd need to know the size of the unit first, though, to make compatible prices, you know?
Yeah, that would be awesome.
So if you could find out the, the size of the unit, it'd be very important.
Okay.
So I have numerous questions, which I think you should answer, which, there's a letter sent to all of us, everybody received it in school committee. I'm not sure it was from, doesn't have a name on it, and everybody received it, am I correct?
Yes.
You received a letter from the, the date of February tenth? It said it was sent to every school member?
Yeah, it was a, yes.
From a preschool teacher, yes.
From a preschool teacher, okay, it doesn't say it was sent from?
No one identified who sent it to us.
What's that? I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
We, no, we do not know who sent it to us. We know it just came through the school secretary.
Okay, so could you address some of those questions? I don't expect you to right now, Ms. Westman, but just, there are some valid points in there, I think that need to be addressed, and answered.
So, Candice and I will be meeting with the preschool teachers tomorrow, uh, no, Thursday, we have a standing meeting with them, and we will be meeting them, with them to, to We have a standing meeting with them, and we will be meeting them, with them too, to answer some of their questions and have a discussion on it.
Okay. So, those guidelines that says in the letter around Department of Education don't apply?
So, Mr. Larry, they're going to, Director Andrade and Ms. Westman are going to meet with the teachers. I will say, at this point in time, they have reviewed all these things with the teachers. Some of the teachers may not like the size of their classroom going forward compared to others, and I think they're going to have a further discussion, but I think it may be best after they have the meeting with the teachers, first and foremost, to find out who sent the letter and meet with the, find out what's going on.
Very good. I would, I would hope that you at least address that with them and then come back to us, explain the questions, because there's a lot of questions in there that, especially to deal with the Department of Education, that I, my concern, need to be answered.
All I know is that Director Andrade has reviewed all those, and I believe...
Director Andrade?
Director Andrade has reviewed all those, and as far as we know, following the regulations, they are all being followed. Is that correct?
Yeah, the recommendations not required.
Their recommendation's not requirement, so they will have a meeting.
So, could I just ask, did, did the principal and Ms. Andrade receive the letter as well?
We did.
Okay. So, next month you could update us on the letter, the date to respond?
We were unaware it was coming.
That's fine. It was received yesterday, if you received it, so, a month, next month you can answer the questions, you'd be fine. Thank you.
One, one last question, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Larry?
Ms. Westman, and anybody else, and Mrs. Jermaine, in, in, one of the bullets that was sent, it said that NFCOZ will be relocating. Where are they?
That's the Cozy.
What's Cozy?
That's our in-school program we have here. After-school program.
Okay. So, I guess my question would be, how many rooms do they have, and how many rooms do other organizations have that could be used for kids' rooms, or something else, resource rooms, other case may be, that would give it out to organizations that work with us? And I don't expect you to answer that right now, or if you could get that answered to us?
If you want me to, I can.
Yeah, I would appreciate that. I mean, and that should go to everybody, Rogers, Thompson, all the buildings, because I know there's rooms at Rogers that, I've been with Ms. Jermaine myself, that the, they're splicing trees together, you know, from, from the Preservation Society or something like that. There's a whole room over there, the old wing. So, I, I don't, I don't say it's wrong, but I would like to know how many rooms that were given out, quote unquote, to other organizations that could be used for something else.
So, for the NFCOs, for ours, the rooms that we allocated for them for next year would not be rooms that we could put, like, classrooms in or students. We're going to use, they're going to actually take the current staff lounge, and they're actually going to take the plan engineer's office. So, those wouldn't be offices that we would allocate for students or could be a classroom. The only other people that we have are our family service coordinators. They're in the front office, and those, I think, are the only extra people that we have that take rooms besides school staff.
Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? Mrs. Boland?
It might be worth it to check with Mr. DeSanti, too, on, you know, the storage, because he had ideas, and I think that he should participate in that discussion, because I know he also wants to discuss the parking with you.
Yeah, I think he's going to come to, he's coming to the meeting tomorrow.
He's coming, okay.
Yep, they are coming tomorrow.
You just didn't mention it.
I'm sorry. Yes, they are.
Thank you, Principal Westminster. Thanks for all your work, too.
Next item is six point two, update on RFP, district tuition op, tuition opportunities for high school students, and I believe Superintendent Jermaine has some information on that, RFP.
Yes, as Chairman Gomes mentioned earlier this evening, the district, in all its efforts to look at all viable options for our high school situation and our high school students, we did put out an RFP to all districts in the state of Rhode Island, and it went out, and we did have quite a few inquiries, but only one response was received, and that was from Middletown. The response gave us highlights of their program, programming available at Middletown High School, along with their demographics and associate costs that they incur for, per student, for services they have. And these services ranged from general education to students that received special need services or students who required ELL services. It also, in their proposal request, they also sent food service costs and transportation for our athletes, and they also provided an overview of their strategic plan and their pathways that they have at Middletown High School. The request, the response, did not include any type of tuition rate schedule and contract terms if Newport did decide to tuition out high school students to Middletown. Middletown mentioned in their response that they would like to discuss this if Newport is interested in pursuing this avenue. They also mentioned, at this point in time, they're only able to service four hundred students. Right now, we currently have a population of six hundred ninety. In the backup, you have a letter from the chair, and you also have the highlights from their high school.
And any discussion or questions for the superintendent on the RFP for Middletown?
Just a comment, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Larry?
I thought it was very informative that Middletown is one of twelve high schools in the state, being a four-star high school. Very impressive.
It's very, it's very good. I also was very surprised on their demographics, how different they are from us.
Correct.
So, and again, I'll remind everybody that this is available on board docs. Once we get through the meeting tonight, this will be in the public portion, and you're welcome to go and read through it. There is some interesting information, so I encourage everybody to... Any other questions or discussion? Mrs. Bowright?
I was on a cost-per-child document, which shows, which has a footnote at, on it, which described the two Little Comptons and Jamestown, the reason why their cost-per-child is so high, footnoted that it's because they tuition their students out. So, from that note made it sound like it was an expensive proposition, just wanted to add that. It's on Rides documentation of their yearly cost per student.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda, seven point one and seven point two, Approval of Minutes, a Request for Home, for Approval of Invoices and Requisitions. Is there a motion to approve the Consent Agenda as presented this evening?
So moved.
Made by Dr. Flowers, seconded by Ms. Bowright. Any discussion or questions on the Consent Agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries. Next item is Section Eight, Correspondence. Is there a motion to receive the correspondence as presented this evening?
So moved.
Dr. Flowers, seconded by Mrs. Boland. Any questions for, on the correspondence? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next item up is Reports from Superintendent and Staff, and the first one is nine point one and nine point two, the Business Manager Expenditure and Revenue Reports and the Restricted Grant Reports. Welcome back.
Hi, everybody. Just give me one second, please. I'd just like to read a statement from the memo I sent attached with the financial docs. In the January thirty-first, twenty-twenty expenditure analysis resulted in an overall increase in our forecasted budgeted expense of approximately fifty-two thousand dollars. However, based upon a revision we discussed earlier in the meeting, I am anticipating a small surplus of seventeen K. I just wanted to point that out. Is there any specific questions about budget docs?
Ms. Chairman, I have a few questions.
Mr. Larry?
Let me look at this one for you. I don't know if you have the answers to any of these questions. I don't know if you have answered any of these questions now, or you can do it later. This goes out, so, one thing I found strange, that there's nearly a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar surplus in salaries, next to a hundred and sixty-two thousand dollar shortfall in professional contract services. So, I tried to get my head around that, saying, why are we one twenty-three, one twenty-three thousand in surpluses in salaries, but we're a hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars short in professional contract? So, what I thought was, and I'm probably wrong, you can correct me, could that mean salary positions are being filled with contracted employees? But that seems to be contradicting the eighteen thousand dollar shortfall in benefits. It seems logical that if a salary employee with benefits are being replaced with contracted employees without benefits, the benefits expense would reduce along with the salary expenses. And I don't expect you to answer that right now.
I, I have an answer for you, sir.
Okay.
The large change in the summary account number fifty-three hundred, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars was approved by this committee last month for IT services. I included that in my forecast. Wasn't in the budget that was presented to the committee seven or eight months ago, or whenever, whenever happened.
So, that would cover for the professional contract services?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So, small swings in, in salary infringe, you know, I would expect to see small changes continuing through the rest of the year. I'm doing my best to get my estimate out for the next six months. It's going to be very challenging to get down to exact.
I think you're doing a wonderful job, first of all. Again, I know I said that last month, so I'll repeat that. So, I have a, one other request. We'll be starting twenty-one budget talks very soon, and I, again, I don't want, you don't have to answer that right now, but with a two percent raise for ten, a two percent raise for Caus-94, plus the increase in retirement cost we have to do as a result of that two percent, plus the intent increase that was, I don't have that number in front of me, but I'm just throwing a number out there, and I hate doing that, but it might be seven hundred thousand dollars, you know? So, as we start meeting with principals and everybody else, we're going to need seven hundred thousand dollars just for salaries next year. Nothing else, nothing else. Am I correct in assuming something like that? Don't, don't quote me on the number, but in that area.
Well, if you don't quote me on the number, I agree with you. We have some, some things to work out in our, in our new budget, and I have not quantified exactly what the dollar impact will be on the fifty-one category or the fifty-two just yet.
So, I just think that, you know, you have to be that voice at that meeting, letting the staff and people know that they're coming here wanting three more teachers, they want this, they want that. They're going to have to reduce something to get to that point. We can't, you, you, you mean, just if, if the town, sorry, city gives us a four percent raise, it's about, again, around a million dollars, you know? So, you're using this all up for that one item almost. So, you, you can't even think this, Rod, I mean, you got to start off with a different tone with negotiations for two thousand twenty-one, in my opinion. And thank you. You're doing a wonderful job, I mean that.
Thank you.
I've been here through about fifteen, fifteen business managers in eighteen years, you know?
Ms. Bowright?
I was just going to say that we're fault, we actually have had a meeting to start it off already, and we are following the city's process, which is, you know, there's two percent raise, and then there's five percent that they add for health benefits, and we're trying to use their process a little bit more. You're right, there you can't add a whole lot after, you know, but we, you know, they've given us very small amounts in the past in cut and things like that. So, it's also talks about enrollments and changes in programs and things like that. So, anyhow, just wanted to say that, because we're following the city's process a little bit more than we have in the past. Thank you.
You're telling me the city has given us low amounts of money? That's what you said?
I said, there have been years that the city, last year, they gave us four percent, correct? The previous years, they have not always given us four percent. They have given us different rates over the last ten, twenty years, sometimes, I mean, they've even given us negative numbers at one point in time when they got an exception made, so that's all I'm saying.
Any other questions for Mr. Gonzalez? Mr. Larry?
No, no, I'm good, I'm good. Just tell her she's wrong.
Okay, thank you. As customary, we will make a motion to accept nine point three, nine point four, nine point five, nine point six, nine point seven, and nine point eight of the reports. We'll accept them as presented. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Mrs. Neary, seconded by Dr. Flowers. Are there any questions or discussion on any of those reports? Seeing none, motion to approve as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is Section Ten, Suggested Meeting Dates, and we have tomorrow evening, there'll be the City Council meeting, which will be the Stage Two application that we approved this evening, will be presented to them for their approval. Thursday, February twentieth, there's a Newport School Committee, Newport City Council Liaison Subcommittee at five thirty, and the Newport Police Station, the Newport Police Station's Assembly Room. Friday, February twenty-first, there's a Newport School Committee Wellness Subcommittee Meeting at nine thirty AM, location to be determined, you'll have to look on our calendar for that. Friday, February twenty-first, there's a Finance Subcommittee at ten AM, Superintendent's Office at Rogers High School, Room three oh five. Monday, February twenty-fourth, there's a Newport City, Newport School Committee Workshop with state legislators at six PM here in Pell Elementary School. And on Tuesday, February twenty-fifth, the Newport School Committee Policy Subcommittee meets at twelve thirty, Rogers High School, Room three twenty-five, which is also the Superintendent's Office. Those are our meeting dates. Any discussion or questions on the meeting dates and agenda items? Seeing none, there's no need this evening for executive session, and the motion would be in order to adjourn the meeting at this.
So moved.
Made by Doc, Mrs. Neary, seconded by Dr. Flowers. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Meeting adjourned. Trying.
Colleen, I have a question for you.
I had the channel work. It's a, this one says it, but they're doing a channel work, so I didn't want to put publicity in the water. I just assumed it. You know why? If you went to them and they wanted, they requested the pool, bring it back next month.
Bobby, I was just saying that we started, and we're following their process, so we are doing what you're saying. So, I thought you'd be happy. You should be happy.
I'm not happy, chief. Stop making cuts, making this complicated.